If we have everyone with us. All right. All right, I think Commissioner Lanier is joining us. So we'll go ahead and get started and expect that she'll be joining us momentarily. So I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Oh, there she is. Hi, Commissioner. All right, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. If this is the first time that you're joining us for a city commission meeting, I'm going to ask you to join me for a moment of silence and then pledge of allegiance, and then we'll move on to roll call. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we will go to roll call.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Commissioner Moody?
Here.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Here.
Commissioner Isasi?
Here.
Commissioner Lanier?
Present.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. So next I'll call for a motion to approve the minutes, and then I'll introduce Ms. Lily Beth Perez. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, City Clerk, you want to call the vote on the minutes?
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Thank you. And so tonight we have three opportunities for public comment, and I'll open up the first momentarily. The first opportunity for public comment will be on items that we're voting on tonight. So if you have the agenda in front of you, you can look at the action items that we talked about or discussed today. So the first opportunity for public comment will only be for comments on those items. We do have a scheduled public hearing tonight related to the commemorative designation of Monroe Center to be called Brianna Taylor Way. And then at the end, we have regular public comment. So if you want to call in for a public comment, you dial 456-3000 or 311, and then you'll hear a prompt and you hit number one. So if you want to speak on the first public comment period, it would be number one. If you are speaking on the scheduled public hearing about the commemorative designation, that would be number two. And then at the end of the meeting, that would be for any other comments, and that's number five. So with that, I will introduce Ms. Lily Beth Perez, who is with us tonight to provide translation services.
Thank you, Mayor Bliss. If you need interpretation services in order to address the city commission, I will be able to assist. Please dial 456-3000 and select the option you wish to speak on. Si necesita servicios de interpretación para dirigirse a la comisión de la ciudad, estaré para ayudarle. Marque el 4563000 y seleccione la opción en la cual desee hablar. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. All right, so we'll start with our first opportunity for public comment. Again, this is public comment on items that we're voting on tonight. A couple of our rules for public comment is that we ask that you hear your name, the city that you live in, and for this first opportunity, we ask you to specifically say what item you're speaking to. So on the agenda, that would maybe be community development number one or committee number one. So we ask you to be explicit about that. You'll be given up to three minutes to speak. And again, we ask that you not use any curse words or inappropriate language. All right, so Daniel, does anyone in the queue?
We do, Mayor. Here comes the caller.
Okay, thanks.
Caller, you're on the line with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Good evening to all veterans and citizens of Grand Rapids. What's the reporting? And five, I'll need to amend my comments. The keeper should always include Fulton Manor, the Van Handel Pavilion at 1450 East, East Fulton. You can pick up 200 SROs there easily. On the Wheeler Wedge, giving the almost a no bid handout to Wheeler again for 24 floors. We create just another 24 for boom box next to the 12th floor. Monroe Live Boom Box. That is parked in the biker roar zone. And that particular corner is as bad as ever in the past. Wheeler has shabbily treated us at 55 Ionia South. We used to have a six-rudder bus stop there, and they took it over for valet parking at that key bus section. Moving on, on 72, the, she only includes youth centers, but all senior homes subsidized by the federal law. Twenty or more seniors as well. She would consider sensitive land use regarding marijuana grow zones. 73, you're down on 60 officers from Mary Louie's time. Let's get back up to around 363, hire 60 more officers. On 74, Information Center certainly should include the story 2024 route, bus route there at the same location which Mr. Atchison is advocating for. 95, this is a no bid contract for 890 grand. Please consider school buses, okay? Other many bus operations in western Michigan. 890 grand is too much. Right now you have more dash stops than city bus stops. For example, the Lebanon, Conville, and other routes downhill in Pell Hill, Michigan, got no stops from way up around Butterworth all the way over to City Hall. And as you know, Rapid is a bigoted, anti-Catholic, anti-black corrupt organization. Ruses neighborhoods and corrupt simply don't get downtown. Moving on, 98, on Fuller, Route 13 is one there.
That's three minutes, Mr. Miller. Thank you very much. Thank you. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Hello?
Hi.
Yes, you have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Hi, City Commission. Thanks for having me on. Thanks for taking the time to do these hearings in the proper way. My name is Turk McCarron. I'm a city of Grand Rapids resident. I'm calling to speak on the topic of the marijuana regulations that you're discussing tonight. I have a couple of points. The first is that I would ask that you don't add any more sensitive land uses to the requirements, particularly while we're in the middle of an application window, but also because there's a good amount of evidence that shows that underage usage of marijuana is not a particular issue if a dispensary or provision center is open in an area. And same is true for any kind of crime increases. There's quite a bit of scientific data out there that supports that position, I believe. And then secondly, I would ask that we don't remove the waiver process unless some other separation distance is also removed. If we don't, if we add another waiver process, it's going to make even less eligible properties, which is going to cause high prices for real estate for the applicants for marijuana and is only going to benefit a select few of city residents. And then that would just result in a lot of lost business and lost jobs, particularly at a time when we really need that with the pandemic and all the budget prices that we're all facing. So yeah, in sum, please do not add the youth center, sensitive youth, and please make this as more of an open process as you can in terms of allowing marijuana to thrive, because I believe we really need it. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thank you, Daniel. And thank you, Commissioners. This is Landon Bartley, Grand Rapids resident, Ward 1. I'm calling about item number 10.5 and zoning ordinance amendments. And thank you for your work on this topic. I recognize more than most perhaps the difficulty involved in trying to make the right decision on these kind of questions, and especially regarding a potentially contentious issue like cannabis. So thank you. In regards to the amendments that are proposed tonight, I would ask that you would adopt the item, the ordinance, as proposed by the planning director, with one exception. Being like the earlier caller mentioned, if the waiver process is removed, as difficult and frustrating as it may have been or be for the planning commissioner, staff, or neighbors or applicants, like the earlier caller said, if you remove that process, please, that will remove properties from eligibility, and it might be worth considering what current separation requirements might be worth reconsidering. I'd suggest some actual research, local, original research that could build on, I think, the studies that are out there that don't show a correlation with negative land use impacts on items such as youth centers or others. An earlier caller also talked about senior homes. I would just guard, I guess, or caution against introducing too many or any new sensitive land uses, especially like another caller mentioned, or in the middle of an application window. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Landon. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, Commissioner. This is Aaron Smith from Grand Haven, Michigan. Again, I am calling about item 10.5, similar to what the previous callers had mentioned, giving you a call in regards to allowing individual businesses that have been in the middle of the application window that have medical licenses to still be allowed to transfer or at least adopt the resolution proposed by the planning director. We feel it's very important for us as a business, as well as everyone else in the medical marijuana industry, to be allowed the same opportunities as those in the recreational side. We feel we've done a lot, as everyone has in the community, to be afforded the same opportunities. And much of what was stated earlier is in line with where we fall. And thank you for your work. I understand it's a difficult subject and look forward to doing business there in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device?
Yep.
Thank you, caller. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Commissioner, for the time. My name is John McLeod, and I live in Lebonia, Michigan. I'm calling regarding item number 10.5 as well. I'm a stakeholder in the city of Grand Rapids in the medical marijuana market. I have a few licenses for approved locations that currently have waivers that they've received and waivers that they've received without community pushback. As a matter of fact, one of my projects received 117 letters of support for those waivers. So I'm asking that those waivers are allowed to continue for the medical applicants into the adult use market so as we're not put at an unfair disadvantage in the industry. Secondly, I'm really confused about this youth center kind of approach here. I find it confusing what the definition of an actual youth center is. It really puts a lot of uncertainty moving forward for the stakeholders in actually getting these operations up and running. And it prevents us from really putting forth the full effort of what good can come from this industry in the city of Grand Rapids, which the large benefit to the city is jobs. These are good-paying jobs. These are well-paying jobs. These are jobs for people that are historically underemployed or unemployed, and these are jobs that are hypo-local jobs. And I feel like adding any other confusion into this already uncertain industry would be prohibitive. Not to mention that it's during an application process and during a time when people have invested millions of dollars in the city during a time when people aren't spending that money to open retail locations. So I just ask that, you know, you consider that, consider 10.5, and allow these waivers to continue for adult use without any further confusion. And again, thank you for your hard work and thank you for your time.
Thank you, caller. Mayor, there are no more callers in the queue.
Thank you, Daniel. We'll go ahead and close that opportunity for public comment, and we will move on to petitions in communications.
The first petition in communication is a communication received from Gina Ben Timmerin regarding their resignation with the Downtown Improvement District Board.
That is referred to Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from Mariela Aguilar expressing support for considering youth centers a sensitive land use.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Michelle Shimkey including feedback for the Grand Rapids Police Department Strategic Master Plan.
That is received and filed.
Communication from Scott Atchison regarding a downtown information center.
That is received and filed.
And four communications received regarding renaming of Monroe Center to Brianna Taylor Way.
That is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to reports of city officers, and we have four items tonight.
Yep, Comptroller's report for the period of September 3, 2020, through September 16, 2020, and the amount of $23,207,176.62.
That is received and filed.
Treasurer's report for the period of August 29, 2020, through September 11, 2020.
That is received and filed.
Quarterly investment report for April through June 2020.
That is received and filed.
And the City Clerk's submitted a report regarding the November 3, 2020, general election.
And that is also received and filed. And City Clerk, just one point about that last item. Can you make sure that the city commission gets that report as well and that it's made available to the community?
Yep, if they're looking at the agenda now, they can. I'll make sure the commission gets it.
Great, thank you. I know it's in the agenda packet, but sometimes it's a little wieldy. It's so lengthy. So it's a good report, and you're doing important work, and we want to make sure everyone is aware of that. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda and reports of standing committees. So these are items that we talked about earlier and today in one of our standing committee meetings, where when we voted, they were voted on unanimously. So tonight with one voice vote, we will adopt those items. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Some votes.
Thank you. Moved and supported. Any questions or comments? All right, City Clerk, you want to call the vote on that?
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, Commissioners, that will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have six ordinances for us tonight. We will start with the first one.
The first ordinance is an ordinance amending Section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2020-15 for fiscal year 2021, Amendment Number 6.
Some votes. Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner O'Connor, the chair of our fiscal committee, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just three items tonight. The first one is the police department's requesting to appropriate $1,000 to attend a seminar for continuing education. Item 2 is the recognition of an Auto Prevention Authority grant. This is a program that's existed for some time now. We share this grant with Kentwood in Wyoming. It has some match dollars, but it's a pretty significant grant of over $400,000. And the last one is for the engineering department and our Vital Streets. It's just an allocation to expend some additional money to continue the good work of our Vital Streets Village. There is no use of contingent amounts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, any, Commissioners, any questions or comments about this item? All right, I'll turn to the City Clerk to call for the vote.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, and Commissioners, can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
Some votes. Support.
Thank you. Moved and supported. City Clerk, will you call the vote on that?
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, that'll take us to our second ordinance tonight.
An ordinance to amend Section 4.4 of Ordinance 2019-55, update the title and range for parking equipment technicians.
All right, can I get a motion?
Some votes.
Support.
Thank you. Moved, supported. Commissioner Jones, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, Mayor. The classification of parking meter service worker has evolved over time, and certain employees have been assigned to on-street work while others have been in the office handling cash and reporting. This reclassification with the title change aims to consolidate all duties back into one position, and this has also created the need to increase the salary as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, questions or comments? All right, I'll turn to our City Clerk to call for the vote.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, that'll take us to our third ordinance tonight.
An ordinance amending Section 4.2 of Ordinance 2019-56, range change for wastewater plant superintendent.
All right, can I get a motion?
Some votes.
Support.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner Lanier, you want to tell us about this?
I'm having a challenging time closely enough off of my new looking here at my document. So sorry that I'm reading. Um, the, actually, it's the equivalent of the previous. The difference here is that the position is the Assistant Environmental Services Manager is the position, and there's been a change of the range for that position.
Right.
We, I think, reviewed this maybe earlier this month in civil service.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, Commissioners, any questions about that? All right, I'll turn to...
Mayor, point of order, Mayor. I just want to make sure, is that, are we voting on? I thought I had the... So I just want to make sure we're...
So we're voting on, I think, that we change the range for the wastewater plant superintendent from a 20 to an 18. Amending the pay range and making the...
Okay, I just thought that Commissioner Lanier, you took the one that I had. I did. I'm sorry, because they're all a blur for me because of having reviewed them. You're right, I'm sorry, but it's all the same. Okay, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Thanks for clarifying that.
I wish we could take all of these together. It does make it better. All right, so we'll, we'll... The ordinance related to the wastewater plant superintendent changing from a range of 20 to 18. So, City Clerk, you want to call the vote on that?
Yep, Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, now it will take us to our fourth ordinance, which again is a range change.
Yep, this is an ordinance amending Section 4.3 of Ordinance 2019-56, range change for Assistant Environmental Services Manager.
All right, can I get a motion?
Some votes.
All right, do I have support?
Support.
All right, moved and supported. So Commissioner Isasi, you want to tell us about this one?
Sure. So it's similar to the one that we just reviewed for the Assistant Environmental Services Manager, moving from a range 20 to a range 21 after a classification compensation study.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. All right, Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, City Clerk, you want to call the vote?
Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, Commissioners, next up, welcome to consideration of, or I'm sorry. City Clerk, you want to.
That's fine.
Almost took your job.
Consideration of zoning ordinance technical, that's relative to land use.
City Manager. All right, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kelson to provide some background on this.
A lot of feedback during the last vote, so I would ask everyone to put their mics on mute while Mr. Kelson breathes.
All right, thank you, City Manager. All right, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kelson to provide some background on this and then we can open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. The recommended ordinance before you would amend the zoning ordinance relative to cannabis regulations in the following ways. In regards to sensitive uses, there are no changes that are proposed in the recommended ordinance. In regards to separation distances, in general, there are no recommended changes proposed to the current ordinance. The exception to that statement is relative to micro businesses where the separation distances are slightly reduced based on the zone district. In regards to the waiver process, the proposed ordinance would eliminate the waiver process in its entirety, which means that it would eliminate the ability for a facility to obtain a sensitive use waiver. The exception to that relates to provisioning centers that have already obtained land use rights as of today to allow for them to seek permission from the Planning Commission to consider the transfer, if you will, of the waiver so that it not only applies to a provisioning center or a medical license, but would also apply to a recreational license at that same facility. Regarding youth centers, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on August 13th and ultimately does not recommend adding these youth centers as a sensitive land use. This recommendation was supported by several concerns that are outlined in my staff report and also I've reported them in detail at the August 25th and September 15th meetings. I have given this issue significant consideration, thought and care into my recommendation and ultimately I do agree with the Planning Commission's recommendation and I do not support the addition of a new sensitive use. I can go over those concerns again if needed, but I will ask, or just let you ask the questions since I have covered them previously. In regards to micro businesses, the proposed zoning ordinance, well, first of all, a micro business is the operation of a vertically integrated cannabis and it grows, processes and sells its own cannabis at retail to adults over 21 years of age. The regulations in the proposed ordinance are structured to be most permissive in the industrial zone district and eventually becoming more restrictive in process and regulations as we move into the traditional business area and the TOD zone districts where they're located within 500 feet of a residential zone district. So hopefully that table in my staff report was helpful in understanding how the scale of those regulations move from being most restrictive to least restrictive in areas that I think are most appropriate based on the nature of the use itself. The last significant item within the recommended ordinance is under the transfer of sensitive uses and I briefly touched on this previously, but there are approximately seven provisioning centers within the city that have been approved by the Planning Commission to operate. Under the current ordinance, they cannot apply for recreational retail license because the approved facility did require a sensitive use waiver. So under the fast track ordinance, sensitive use waivers do not transfer the ordinance that we adopted back in July 7th of 2021, pardon me. So the sensitive uses do not transfer so that that facility is not eligible to obtain a recreation retail license. So the attached ordinance would provide a path for that provisioning center that has established land use rights and it would be a request to the Planning Commission for consideration to allow that sensitive use to not only apply to the provisioning center, but also apply to the recreational type. And the Planning Commission would utilize their special land use standards in the consideration of how that transfer would impact the neighboring uses and then of course there's other criteria that's relevant as well. So with that, I will turn it back to the commission and certainly available if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kelson. All right, I will open it up for questions or comments, Commissioners. All right, do I see any questions or comments? Commissioner Lanier?
Yes, I'm wondering because there's a lot of content in what, in how the information is being presented and first I'd like to say, Kristin, I think you and your team have done an amazing job at trying to take the various perspectives as well as the Planning Department and to try and put it in a fashion that's digestible and understandable for both the commission as well as the public because it is complex and there are a lot of moving parts to this work, so thank you for that. Because one portion of the information that's posted had multiple versions of language regarding the youth centers, I'm trying to understand that if, because many of us have expressed interest in that, so I'm curious to know that if we wanted to make the decision to include youth centers as a sensitive use in that sensitive use category, in the existing sensitive use category, how do we go about doing that the way it's currently written? Because it looked as though there were a few options there for that particular language. So I'm just trying to make sure that I understand.
So I think I would defer to the Attorney's Office for that specificity, but it would need to be through an amendment of your motion to add in and reference specific sections that need to be amended to add youth centers in as a sensitive use as well as a definition. And yeah, so I don't know if Mr. Strom has additional insight there that he would like to share along with Hitchcock.
Sure. There are three major considerations that would have to be accounted for by adding a new sensitive use, I'm sorry. The first would be the setback distance and in general, that's 1,000 feet. The second major consideration would be what I'll refer to as a timing complication and Ms. Kelson can elaborate on that, or it may also be referred to as an exception for some of the applications that are in process. And then third, it would be a consensus on the definition of youth center. I would state that the Law Department has collaborated with the Planning Department on the recommendation and we think that there are legal risks associated with this, but I won't belabor that at this stage, but the Law Department does support the recommendation coming from the Planning Department.
Okay, so with the existing, just so that I'm clear, thank you so much for kind of summarizing that. So in an amendment, would it be wise then to try and place those three categories that you described, which are the setback, the implementation, timing is what I thought I was hearing, then the last one is the definition of the youth center? Would it make sense then to amend and include all three of those or amend trying to do each of those separately?
I think it would make.
For me, it seems like it would just make sense to try and include all three of them.
I agree. I think that at this stage, there's not a motion on the floor if I'm correct in that. I don't believe a motion has been made.
I believe that there is, City Clerk, you can verify, but I think there is a motion on the floor.
Yeah, there is a motion on the floor. We took that right before Mr. Kelson spoke.
In that case, then there would need to be an amendment offered to account for those three modifications to the original motion. The vote would have to happen on that amendment with those three modifications. And if that was successful, then the original motion would be amended to include that additional sensitive use with those three.
Thank you.
Factors covered.
Thank you. So I'd like to make an amendment to the existing motion to include youth centers and to not have to read all of the language, I think, because it was defined in the language that we had from the Planning Commission or the Planning Department, excuse me, it indicated, well, first I'll say the setback, the amendment, I would want this additional sensitive use to have a thousand feet setback, be consistent with the others. And then the timing, implementation, effective date, I would say that it would be effective after those that are in the queue have been considered so that it is not impacting those that are in the queue. And then the last component is defining the youth centers and there was language that says, okay, I'll read this because it's a lot, and I know this isn't a part of the motion, but just to clarify how I'm defining it. Any facility who offers regular supportive onsite programming or services to persons, and I'm going to say up to 18 years of age or younger, or it says, so I'll say 18 or younger, said programs or services shall operate at minimum of three days per week throughout the academic school year. Facilities, and that seems limited because some of them work in summers as well, so that's, I would say, year round instead of academic school year. Facilities shall be operated by either government agencies or nonprofit organizations. And then the rest of the language in there, programs and services may include but are not limited to social training, cultural, artistic, athletic, recreational, or advisory services and activities and may include private youth membership organizations or clubs and facilities that serve children and youth. A youth center does not include childcare centers, religious institutions, schools or parks and playgrounds, which are already covered in the sensitive land use definition.
So that's the last amendment.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so Commissioner, amendment that would have three components to it. It would add youth centers as a sensitive use with a thousand foot setback. It would allow for an exception for any facility which has either already received a special land use or direct site plan approval or that are in the queue for approval. And then third, the definition would include some of the language provided, but the age would be 18, year round programming at a minimum of three hours a day. So that's the summary of the motion before us. Is there support for that amendment?
Support.
Okay, so that is the amendment that is before us to consider and discuss. Commissioner O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. This is frustrating. We have an appointed planning professional who has provided us her recommendation that this is a bad idea. We have an appointed planning commission who you all decided to appoint, who unanimously says this is a bad idea. And we have a legal department who says that this is a bad idea and yet we think somehow as non-land use professionals, we think that we should do this and make this amendment because we think it's going to have some better outcome for people in Grand Rapids. It's just, it's terribly frustrating. And you know, I feel like, you know, we continue to talk as a body about the injustices of the drug war on people of the minority communities and yet we're going to go ahead and put more restrictions in place that are going to increase land costs and provide less opportunities for people of color to get into the business. This is just all around bad policy with this amendment.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, others who wish to weigh in? Commissioner Jones, did you have your hand up?
I did, thank you, Mayor. I want to first state that I too recognize the work put in by Ms. Kelson and your staff as well as the Planning Commission. I took the opportunity to read the notes from the hearing that took place with the Planning Commission. I can appreciate in particular their reference to not wanting to necessarily move on this based on the fact that it's not their job to create policy. And so they, I think, you know, their response was, although they didn't, it seemed as if they were not in support of having youth centers recognized as sensitive use and again, did not feel like it was their, it was in their, or that they were responsible for creating a policy. And I can also appreciate my colleague, Commissioner O'Connor, his frustration with this and the fact that it could very well come across as just another layer. And I will say with this particular issue, I think if anything, what it does is, I'm hoping that it further speaks to what I feel is probably the one group that I think is the, or can be seen to some degree as part of the collateral damage of this industry. And I'm not picking on the industry because again, I recognize it as a legitimate business opportunity. It's the law. And so I'm not picking at the cannabis industry. However, I think what it potentially speaks to is quite often the collateral damage or the people group that gets most adversely affected are the youth. And I think this is an example and I think that it would be, I think it in some ways is inconsistent if we do not look to support or put something in place that speaks to in many ways protecting the youth. I'm not, I'm not in any way demonizing or wanting to put in bad light the owners of these facilities, but I am very cognizant of the fact that, you know, young people in particular have significant amounts of peer pressure and temptation. And I happen to run an organization that has worked for decades, really advocating for the work of smoking cessation or really trying to prevent young people from engaging in smoking. And so I think that it definitely in some circles would not be seen as popular, but I will say that I have a peace of mind in being supportive of this simply because if it's something that is going to, again, further protect youth, then I'm in support of it. And again, I can understand the tool that was in place, you know, already within the Planning Department to consider, you know, potential business that would be near a youth center if the youth center was not recognized as sensitive use. I think this just further, I think enhances, you know, the potential of it not happening. And so I am, again, I'm supportive of this. I'm supportive of it being listed as on the sensitive use list. And I'm also, again, very much in support of recognizing it as something that will not negatively impact those who have gone through the process thus far and those who are in the queue. Again, they will not be injured. They have crossed the Ts and dotted the Is and, you know, they will have an opportunity to place their business where they please or where they've already purchased land. And so I don't, I don't see this as a major, a major roadblock for those who are already in the process. And so again, I'm in support.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo all of the sentiments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I echo, um, all of the sentiments of all my colleagues, beginning with Commissioner Lanier, O'Connor, and Jones. My question is to the, uh, uh, city attorney, uh, will we face any legal ramifications behind this?
From the marijuana-related trainings that I've been to, whenever you're making policy or, or regulations on marijuana, it's likely that litigation is going to ensue. I would say that adding additional regulations increases the chance that litigation will befall us. And I can't be confident, uh, at this stage of, of the success based on the fact that it hasn't been filed. But I think it's highly likely that we will see litigation based on the experience of other local municipalities, the City of Lansing and, and others. But, um, this particular issue hasn't necessarily been litigated.
And maybe, uh, Mr. Strom can speak to this. I, I do wanna remind, um, everyone that we have, uh, had lawsuits related to marijuana facilities. It's actually quite common, uh, in cities across the country. Uh, and so, you know, it's, it's, it's a risk that we take when we set policy, uh, that there may be litigation. Commissioner Lanier?
Thanks, Mayor. I think, um, this, the whole cannabis discussion that we've been having, I guess, probably for three years now, has really, um, started, I think, you know, to Commissioner O'Connor's point about it being bad policy. I actually think that we started off with bad policy, and that's why we're here making yet another amendment. And I think, um, when, when we were threatened, um, to, for marijuana to be put on the ballot and the loss of control by this, um, body to create the policy was the beginning of what I consider, um, um, an inappropriate way of doing good, sound policymaking. Because when you're rushing or when you're creating policy with your back up against the wall, you do the best that you can um, with the limited amount of time that we had. And I think that, um, we are seeing the ramifications of that. Because there had been, I, I remember Network 180, um, um, there was Arbor Circle, and there were a couple other organizations that came to us talking about youth centers at the beginning. And as we were rushing through, a lot of those things were, were left off the table as we were making the decisions for the earlier policies. Um, and as I look at youth centers, um, to me, if we're talking about, um, schools, we're also talking about, um, youth programming through religious institutions. They're the same kids very likely that will be in the building that's next to it or down the street from it, um, experiencing youth programming. So I don't know how, why it seems challenging to understand um, the difference between which building that those same youth are in. If we're saying that schools should be, or the state is saying, or we're saying, I should say, that this, that schools are a sensitive use, then everywhere that those children are, you know, should be considered, every public space or nonprofit space that they're in, we should be looking at those spaces the same. Um, so, um, you know, I, I'm not going to apologize necessarily for the, um, angst or frustration that, that anyone is experiencing from this, as much as I think this is just the, the nature of policymaking, and you have to continue to work to get it right. And I'm hopeful that we can, after all of this review and all of this time that we spent on yet another year, that, um, through some of the changes that we're making tonight, that we can move beyond this. Um, so that the businesses that are trying to open can open um, and get their licenses and go through the process, as well as the community can stop being on edge and angst and watching five-hour meetings here and there to try and keep up with the number of public hearings and discussions, as well as the many, um, neighborhood meetings that are being held regarding this, this subject. So, um, I'm hopeful that we can get the support of the commission to, um, support this amendment.
Thanks, Commissioner. Um, Commissioners, others, Commissioner Ruppert, and then Commissioner Assisi?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just one quick question for Kristen around the timing that's been proposed in the motion. Uh, the way that Commissioner Lanier stated it was that it was, should we make this change that it wouldn't affect anybody who's in the queue? How would that, uh, implicate the potential for a currently approved medical facility to, um, convert to recreational if their application for that is not currently in the queue?
Well, I think ideally, um, the, the language for that exception would, would read that if a facility or an establishment has already received special land use and/or director site plan approval prior to September 29th, that it shall not be subject to the minimum distancing regulations for a youth center. And I, I don't wanna speak for Commissioner Lanier, of course, but I am hopeful that that maybe was what you meant, that if, if something is already in process or has been established. Um, but I, I think with all due respect, if it could be more clear to the, the way I just read it, I think that that would be helpful, just from a administrative standpoint.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And I think the mayor did clarify when she got the floor back, um, that exact, um, point. That it would cover those that are already, that have already been approved as well.
We've heard queue a lot lately, so.
Yes. And I did, uh, try to clarify that, Kristen, based on some language in front of me to, to make that very clear. But yes, it would, the, with the motion, it would include, um, the exception for any marijuana facility or establishment that has already received special land use and/or director site plan approval prior to September 29th, 2020, um, shall not be subject to the minimum distancing regulations, uh, set with the youth center. All right. So, uh, Commissioner Ruppert, did that answer your question? It did? Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Assisi, did you have a comment or question?
Sorry, Mayor. Thank you. Um, I, I'll just add that, you know, I was not at the commission table when all of you started this work and for Commissioner Lanier to say three years. And I think, okay, I'm, I would also like to move people out of the state of limbo, move the questions that people have so we can continue. You know, we just had a whole presentation about our performance metrics. There's a number of things, um, that we are working across in the city. So I share that as well. I think, um, I'll also share my colleague in the second ward's comments around, you know, really wanna make sure that there is not, you know, any, any sort of, um, demonization of any industry. I think there is a lot of, um, regulations that would, um, make, you know, that, uh, cannabis, um, operator would not wanna violate, you know, that would risk their, their investment overall. And also, you know, we've, we've also heard from community. And I think in a lot of ways, you know, earlier today, we, we talked about something where we heard from community, from the business community about how they felt about social zones. And, and I shared some concerns about that early on with some of you and, uh, but I felt comfortable about where we landed in terms of how can we create, this is always, the work is always going to be imperfect because we are dealing with the reality. So, um, you know, for me, I'm, I'm ready to move forward with this vote and I'll be supporting this amendment.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. I think I'll then turn to the city clerk to call the vote on the amendment. Um, and then I'm told that I will also need to ask for a motion if it passes to give immediate effect. And then we'll vote on the, on the full amended, uh, amended ordinance. So city clerk, can you call the vote on this? And this is, this is a vote on the amendment language that includes, I'll clarify one more time, that three items. It includes adding youth centers at a thousand-foot minimum distance. It includes an exception for any facility or establishment that has already received special land use and/or director site plan approval prior to September 29th. Um, and then it includes the definition, and the definition would be for, uh, government or nonprofit facilities that provide some site programs and services primarily to, um, persons under the age of eighteen and is used for those programs. And as Commissioner Lanier said, minimum three hours a day, year-round. All right. So city clerk, will you call the vote on, uh, amendment?
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
No.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Assisi?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. And then can I take, um, can I get a motion to give it immediate effect?
Don't, you have to have a motion on the whole thing. Sorry.
Whole thing, I'm sorry.
Have a vote on the, the whole thing first.
Okay. So vote on the whole thing and then a motion to give immediate effect. Okay. Thank you, city clerk. Uh, all right.
Don't worry, you have a motion on the floor of the, of the ordinance.
So, um, now we will, uh, ask the city clerk to call for the, uh, vote on the amended ordinance.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
No.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Assisi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. And now can I get a motion to give it immediate effect?
So move.
All right, moved and supported. Uh, city clerk, will you call, uh, the vote for the motion to give it immediate effect?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
No.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Assisi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Lanier?
Aye.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, that will take us to, uh, thank you all for the, uh, the good deliberation on that. And again, I wanna thank city staff and especially, uh, Ms. Turkleson for all of her work, uh, in moving this forward. Uh, so next that will take us to our sixth item before us. Uh, city clerk, you wanna?
Yep, it's the consideration of a major amendment to, to a planned redevelopment district at 925, 1,005, 1,001, 1,041, 1,055, and 1,071, Leffingwell Avenue Northeast.
All right. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Do I have support?
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Uh, Commissioner Moody, you wanna tell us about this one?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. Uh, September 15th of this year, uh, the city commission established that on September 29th, this very day, as the date to consider a major amendment to a previously approved planned redevelopment district located in the vicinity of Bradford Street Northeast and Leffingwell Avenue Northeast, just south of Leonard Street. The amendment is requested to facilitate the construction of an eighty-bed subacute rehabilitation facility for Spectrum Health. Uh, Spectrum Health has, uh, has needs of involving, uh, to grow. And in the era of this development, this originally planned, uh, development has outgrown itself. So therefore, the proposed site plan and use changes to the approved development, uh, plan is to constitute a major amendment, uh, by section five of the zoning ordinance.
All right. All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioners, any questions about this item? All right. And then go ahead and ask our city clerk to call the.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Assisi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Now that will, uh, we don't have any resolutions before us tonight, so that will take us to our scheduled public hearing. Uh, this is a public hearing considering the commemorative designation of Monroe Center uh, to Breonna Taylor Way. And so I will start this public hearing uh, by turning it over to our city attorney, Mr. Berkman, and he can give us some background, answer any questions that we may have, and then I'll open it up for, uh, public comment. Uh, so, Mr. Berkman, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, good evening, Commissioners, and, uh, I just wanna start by saying, um, I'm here on behalf of the engineering department as the, uh, city engineer in the engineering department received a request and petition on July 18th, uh, from the nonprofit organization, uh, Justice for Black Lives, requesting the commemorative designation of Monroe Center, uh, between Monroe Avenue and Division Avenue as Breonna Taylor Way, uh, to serve as a memorial to Ms. Taylor, who was originally from Grand Rapids and tragically killed on March 13th. The request has been circulated to the city departments for review and comment in accordance with the city commission's policy on renaming streets, which includes commemorative designations. Um, and on that note, Monroe Center would remain the official name of the street for mailing and all, all other purposes. And the Monroe Center signs would remain in place. Um, however, signs marked Breonna Taylor Way would be placed under the Monroe Center signs. Um, these, these will be distinctly different, um, to designate the reflective, or to designate the commemorative designation. Um, nine other commemorative street names, uh, exist in, uh, currently throughout the city. Um, two examples would be the portion of Division Avenue designated as Martin Luther King Boulevard, part of Anvil Avenue that's designated as Caesar Chavez Way. So per the commission policy, all, uh, 141 owners of record directly abutting Monroe Center have been notified of this hearing by mail. Uh, Downtown Grand Rapids, Inc. has also been engaged with this process and has assisted with the notification process. So following tonight's public hearing, a resolution will be brought to the hall on October 13th uh, for consideration of this commemorative designation. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions either now or following the public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Berkman. Um, Commissioners, any questions, questions for our city engineer? Uh, and then we'll open up for public comment. Commissioner Moody?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I wanted to know, as you read in your presentation, this is, uh, uh, something that Black Lives Matter has, uh, presented, uh, did, or is this something that family is requesting?
So the, the official request and petition came, uh, from the organization Justice for Black Lives. Um, they, they did note that they had representatives of the family as part of the organization. And as part of our diligence, uh, we did make contact with the attorney of Ms. Taylor's mother, um, just to confirm that the, uh, family was in support of this, and, and they are.
Okay. Because what I heard earlier today, and I'm quite sure some of you heard on the news, that, uh, they were more, uh, not so much interested in the, uh, name of Breonna Way, uh, being in Monroe Center as much as they wanted to see reform, uh, with police department. Um, that, that, that concerned me, uh, a little bit today. Uh, I'm, I have no problem with what we're trying to do, but I just wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing for her memory. Uh, if, uh, um, Monroe Center is the right place for that. Uh, since she grew up in Grand Rapids, uh, um, I'm interested to hear more, maybe have an opportunity to, uh, hear what the public has to say tonight. But I wanted to make sure this is something that the family wants to do and not an organization.
Correct. And, and we did receive that confirmation, um, on behalf of the family.
Thank you, Miss Commissioner. That's a, that's a very good question. And, Mr. Berkman, when you talk to the family, uh, in regards to what Commissioner Moody just said, was there preference that it be on Monroe Center or another location in the city? Did you have that conversation with them?
Um, I, I personally did not. It was, uh, Mr. Kane from the executive office who did speak with, um, uh, the attorney, um, who represents, uh, Ms. Taylor's mother. Um, and so I don't know if other locations were discussed, but I know, um, early on in this process, um, it was, it was clear in terms of the requests that was brought forth that, um, the organization was requesting this, um, segment of Monroe Center.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Uh, Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Berkman, Mr. Berkman, before we move forward? Uh, Commissioner Lanier, and then Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, I'll just make it quick. I know when we put this, when we voted to have this public hearing scheduled, I asked a very similar question, Commissioner Moody, about whether the family was rendering their permission for this. Um, I do know that, or we all know that, um, things have changed since probably that, that conversation. And it may not, um, be a bad idea to reach back out to them, um, especially since after this public hearing, um, um, there'll be a little bit of time before we'll have to make a decision. So I would recommend that just to make sure that in light of so many things, and I didn't see the new segment that you saw, Commissioner Moody? just to make sure that in light of so many things, and I didn't see the new segment that you saw, Commissioner Moody, but just to make sure that they're still where they were at the time when that discussion happened.
Mayor, we'll, we'll follow up, but I, I know that there have been multiple conversations with representatives of the families on several occasions, uh, during the past week, uh, as, uh, the chief and other members of my staff. In addition to Mr. Kane, has met with, uh, certain representatives of the family. And during that time, they did acknowledge, um, the, uh, potential, uh, change commemorative naming, uh, designation of Monroe Center during, during those conversations. And there were not any other conversations, as I'm aware, about other areas of the city where that might occur, but they're fully aware and supportive of what's being, um, proposed and up for public hearing tonight.
Thank you, City Manager. And if that was within the week, then I would say, you know, there's no need to go back and rehash then. I just wanted to make sure, because that was a few weeks ago, that there had been some recent conversation. Good to know.
Good to know. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you said how many other streets in Grand Rapids have commemorative names to them? And what are, what are those streets, uh, for reference? And then, um, a second question is just on the, uh, uh, cost of producing the, uh, according to the policy, the cost is to be paid by the requesting party. But I've heard from some of the folks involved in other street names that ongoing maintenance is an issue for signs as they deteriorate, uh, as organizations have kind of faded, you know, nonprofit was established but might not be in existence anymore. And then that burden falls on the city moving forward. So just a little clarification on those two things would be helpful.
Yeah, so first, in terms of the cost, you're right, the policy does, um, stipulate that the requesting party does pay for the installation and the ongoing maintenance. And so that is something that, um, has been discussed, uh, with the organization. Um, they're willing to take that on. Um, the nine locations that are, uh, currently designated, um, Roberto Hunter Memorial Way, um, is on Sheldon Avenue. Um, Dirk Vlugway is on Fulton Sheldon Library and Park portions of. I mentioned Caesar Chavez Way and Martin Luther King Boulevard already. Um, Officer Bob Kozmitski Way is on Tamarack Avenue. And then there's other designations that are considered commemorative, but not necessarily, you know, after a person or individual. Uh, Museum Row on Pearl Street, Historic Cobblestone Hill is another, um, commemorative designation. Veterans Memorial Bridge and Medical Mile. And I think those are, I think I got through all nine with that.
Thank you. Good questions. Uh, Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Berkman before I open this up for public comment? All right, so I'll, um, remind, uh, individuals who are watching, if you want to weigh in on this very specific topic, I'm going to open up that opportunity for public comment. You can call four, five, six, three thousand, or three one one, hit number one and then number two. Uh, so now I'll turn to Daniel and ask if there's anyone in the queue.
There is, Mayor. Here comes the first caller.
Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
My name is Robert Rossi. I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I wish to express my disagreement with the change of the name of our street to Breonna Taylor Way. I offer instead to change the name to Mr. Lyman Parks Way. First, the death of Ms. Taylor is a tragic loss. My prayers are with her, with her family. My concern is with the organization that's requesting the change. And I don't see how they're considering the history of our city or the devotion of the police who serve in this community to our city. As an example, on the Facebook page of Justice for Black Lives, if you support Donald Trump, you also support racism, homophobia, sexual assault, ignorance, misogyny, and fascism. This type of rhetoric is propaganda, not reasoned political speech. The nature of a statement like that is slander, not a reasoned authentic argument. Therefore, it creates division and fear instead of actual interchange of points of view. There is a way to express a political opinion, and if political change is the objective of this group, then please openly state your political platform so we can agree or disagree. The facts in Ms. Breonna Taylor's case are this. The case was investigated under tremendous political pressure for four months. Knowledge confers authority on people. We have a designated process in this country, we all agreed, which is the justice system. It may not be perfect, but nothing here in this life is. We've agreed to grant authority to our system of justice to address what happens in this situation. There's no dispute in this case that Ms. Taylor's boyfriend did shoot and had a police officer with a bullet as the police entered the apartment. The police did return fire, and after that, I do not know whose bullet or bullets actually struck Ms. Taylor. But these facts are not in dispute. The grand jury and those who investigated this case did have the authority to make this decision. Those who do not have the knowledge do not have the authority to be the judge, jury, and executioner. If you're going to rename this street, I would like to place into consideration Mr. Lyman Parks. He is a pivotal citizen in the history of our city. He's known for meeting all people where they are and being open to talking with all people of all ethnic backgrounds with love and respect. He was also a Christian and a minister, which I believe is an essential element to heal our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Bates, and I'm a resident of Grand Rapids, Michigan, and I'm the president of Justice for Black Lives. Um, I'm calling in favor for the honorary road in honor of Breonna Taylor. Um, this is something that, first off, we did not petition for this until we got the family's approval, this for the family. Also, the political views of the organization has nothing to do with whether or not Breonna Taylor should be honored. She was a frontline worker and deserves to be honored. I visit her home. She's from Grand Rapids, and a lot of her family still lives here. Breonna belonged to a family, a family that will never be the same. And at least the city can do is give them an honorary road where she can be remembered, but that she can be remembered by in the city she was born in.
Are you finished, caller?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, caller. Caller, please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
My name is Leffingwell Leffingwell. I currently reside in Allendale, Michigan. I'm also with Justice for Black Lives. I am in favor of the commemorative renaming of Monroe, Monroe Center. Um, it is part of progress in his history. Currently, we are in the middle of a revolution. Breonna Taylor's name is part of history, and she is a native of Grand Rapids, with many family members still residing there. We need to give our people of color a foundation to build upon and give her family faith and hope in this fight. We need to raise their voices. This is one of the loudest acts we can do to support our community and to support her family. Breonna, Breonna Taylor's family should see their daughter, cousin, niece, and, and best friend's name in the same vicinity of another strong black woman being at the center of the Monroe Center, where Rosa Parks is currently honored as well. I'm done.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Rachel Schroder, and I'm a resident of Grand Rapids. I'm also a member of Justice for Black Lives, and I would like to express my support to changing the name of Monroe Center to Breonna Taylor Way. Um, Breonna Taylor's life was unfairly taken on March thirteenth of twenty twenty, and I feel that it would be a great way to honor her name in her hometown. Her family, they do support this decision, and I feel that it would be a great way for them to remember her and see her name in her hometown.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Ware. I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and I'm calling to support, um, changing Monroe Center to Breonna Taylor Way as a symbolic gesture for a former GR native.
Is that all, caller?
Yeah.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Amanda Elder, and I am from Rockford, Michigan. And I would just like to say that I would like to see the change to Breonna Taylor Way. Um, I have just gotten to know the family a little bit over the past couple, I'd say, month or so. And just knowing all that they've been through and knowing that Breonna grew up in the same city that I grew up in. And, um, they've just been through so much. And, um, I was also part of raising some awareness, and I just would like to see the change. And I also think it would be beautiful to see the street, um, walking right up to Rosa Parks Circle. I just think it would be a beautiful change for the community, and I think it'd be a perfect way to honor Breonna and her family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Araya Van Oost. I'm a resident of Granville. I'm in favor of the proposition. It just seems like a really easy way to recognize one of, uh, Grand Rapids' best-known natives, uh, somebody who's, you know, affected the whole history of the nation. And it would seem remiss not to, uh, commemorate her in some way. I don't need three minutes. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi there, my name is Tiara Mostall, and I'm from Grand Rapids. And I was calling because I'm in accordance to changing Monroe Center to Breonna Taylor Way. Breonna Taylor was a GR native, and I believe that it's right that this city pays homage to her legacy. Um, but yeah, thank you for your time. And again, I am in accordance to changing Monroe Center to Breonna Taylor Way, Bre Way.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Can you please lower the volume on your device? That's okay? You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
My name is Nina Freeman. I am calling from Allen Dale, Michigan. I am the political director of Justice for Black Lives. I am in favor of the honorary renaming of Monroe Center to remember Breonna Taylor. Uh, to the first caller, our political views should not cloud the City Commission's decision in this matter. Breonna Taylor was born and raised in Grand Rapids. She graduated from a Grand Rapids public school. She deserves to be honored where she was born and raised. Her family is requesting this change. Let's do the right thing and make this beautiful change. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
My name is Scott Williams. I am in Grand Rapids. Um, I am calling regarding the, um, change of the Monroe Center. Um, that we, I, I agree that we need to change it to, um, good, forgive me. Um, I, I feel that, that it's at least the least that we can do, considering that the, the home was invaded and that, uh, under the Kentucky Stand Your Law, Stand Your Ground law that he was just in, um, in defending his home. So with that being said, I believe that that's the least that we can do is honor her memories, being as a GR native. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Tawana Gordon. I am the family member of Breonna Taylor. Seneca Palmer is my first cousin. I have been following your meeting this evening. Thank you for, um, having the agenda to commemorate the street Breonna Taylor Way. I think that is important for the city because she was a citizen of ours. Um, I think that it's important that it be on Monroe Center because another individual was commemorated, which is Rosa Parks. We started, um, who activated the civil rights movement as well. And Breonna's death, that has been activated nationwide. There has been a call for justice that African Americans and brown skin individuals receive the same justice as our Caucasian Americans. And I just wanted to be a part of tonight's meeting so that you do know that our family is behind this call to action to commemorate Monroe Center and honor Breonna Taylor. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Becky Lucas Wagner, and I'm a resident of Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm calling tonight in support of changing Monroe Center to Breonna Taylor Way. While changing street names alone cannot fix injustices, it is my firm belief that the change will literally and most figuratively be a sign to our local community that these streets are ours. In this case, this is an opportunity for local leadership to ensure Grand Rapids is showcasing a greater reflection of those we care most deeply about, those who stood on the front lines of this pandemic and those who we must never forget. Those we must continue to advocate for, like Breonna Taylor, who was killed unjustly. This is her hometown. On behalf of my family, I thank you for your time and the opportunity to address this body, and I urge you to please do the right thing and take this small step to make about symbolic change as we look for justice for her and her family.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now. Hello, caller.
Oh, man, I didn't, it was fourteen people. How you doing?
Go ahead with.
Deandre Jones. My bad. This is Deandre Jones, and I'm calling in support of changing, uh, Monroe Street to Breonna Taylor Way. Uh, she was a Grand Rapids native. Um, I've been able to meet her family in protest and march and rally with her family. And I believe, um, from the incidents of with the Grand Rapids Police, or when the Grand Rapids Police, uh, didn't treat them fairly, and her family was visiting, uh, uh, the city of Grand Rapids from Lewisville, or the Grand Rapids Police Department didn't treat them fairly, they didn't treat other people from Justice for Black Lives fairly. And this, um, with everything that's been going on in the city of Grand Rapids, I think that the city, uh, should show that they care about this woman. I believe the story is when her family says she'd give the clothes off her back, uh, she'd probably give her last dollars, uh, and if she was alive, she'd probably be rallying protests and for justice and equality too. So I'm in support of changing Monroe Street to, uh, Breonna Taylor Way, and, uh, that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Can you please lower the volume on your device? Thank you. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Nick Satoro. I'm from Grand Rapids, Michigan. Uh, I just wanted to call in and support the change of Monroe Center to, uh, Breonna Taylor Way. I think that this is something that should be, uh, done pretty easily and should be supported by everyone on the City Commission. Uh, it's a small change, uh, street name, but it has a lot of, uh, significance in the long run of the city and also of the social equity, uh, policy as well that the, uh, that the city has put in place. I think it's very important, you know, that it's a, it's a small, as I said before, it's a small change, but it's gonna, it, it gives an opportunity for people in the city to see that here's something that happened, uh, it's something that's, uh, that often that happens, that it's something that's a catalyst for great change. It's, it'll open it more, it'll open a bigger dialogue for, uh, for racial, racial injustice in the long run. Uh, having something like, having some sort of activity there every year, some sort of parade or even, uh, even some sort of festival there to, as a place making event in the long run would really benefit us as a city and ensure that we, as, as city here and as our hometown, want things to change. And I just wanted to. And I just wanted to, as well, to condemn those who have sent in opposition letters. Uh, after reading through the agenda, it's just ridiculous to see that some people have so much hate in their hearts still. Uh, it shouldn't matter what your religion is, it shouldn't matter your race. It shouldn't matter your orientation. It shouldn't matter what the quality of the person is. Uh, it shouldn't matter the background, whether they were accused of something or not. Uh, this person just will cost their life. And it's sad to see that some people are in opposition to this. Uh, but then again, I just want to voice my support and I hope you guys have a great rest. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, um, my name is Lindsay Brown. I live in Grand Rapids. I am calling in support of changing Monroe Center to Breonna Taylor Way. Grand Rapids needs to be progressive in this revolution. Um, so we need to keep moving forward and keep continuing to make these small changes that will push on to much larger changes. Breonna Taylor, as I stated, she was raised in Grand Rapids and she deserves to be honored accordingly in the city. Um, Breonna Taylor is currently the face of this revolution. Um, and she is, she has numerous changes across America. Um, the fact that she is from Grand Rapids, we should be one of the cities to honor her and to have made something public in her name and we are to keep so. Um, Taylor and her family deserve to have her legacy lived on Grand Rapids. That's all I got going on. Goodnight.
Thank you caller. Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? Thank you. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Hello?
Go ahead.
I am Michael Silva of Grand Rapids. Um, I was just um, calling in support of the name change. And um, would obviously encourage um, your vote towards it. I was also um, just kind of tossing the idea in addition to that name change, maybe um, the street that she grew up on. Maybe changing that as well, um, whether it be um, in a similar manner as um, the changing of Monroe Ave, or Monroe Center, sorry. Um, where it's um, just kind of like the underlined um, name of it rather than the whole name. But um, that was just an idea. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please lower the volume on your device. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now. Hello caller?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yep, you'll need to lower the volume on whatever you're watching this meeting on.
I'm sorry, is this better?
It is. Go ahead. Your time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Erica Eves. I am a member of Breonna Taylor's family as well as a member of Family Over Everything, a community-based organization here in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I first wanted to thank the council for even considering uh, this name change, this honorary name change. Um, I also want to employ you as a member of the family. We are definitely um, trying to work with the city um, hand in hand. Um, and I think that changing the name would at least show support um, of the Grand Rapids officials and community together. Um, that Breonna's name is just not a name that is mentioned nationwide, but is important here as well in our hometown. Um, I understand that um, there were some political views um, that people have argued about. But in our reality, if you push aside the political views, this is the life that we're talking about. This was Tamika Palmer's daughter, a daughter that she would never get a chance to see. I believe that um, in coming back as she will in time, um, even though she will not have Breonna around, just the memory of being able to go down a road that is named after her daughter will um, offer come some kind of solace to her. Um, so again, I just ask the um, city officials um, to, to vote yes. Um, just for the sake of the memory of Breonna and her legacy. Um, I thank you all for your time and, and that ends my um, call.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Yes, this is Amy Carpenter. Um, I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan and the Third Ward. And I'm calling to support the renaming of Breonna Taylor Way. Um, Grand Rapids, of course, has its own history of racism and injustice. And justice looks a lot of different ways. Um, the changes that need to be made, need to be made um, in so many different ways. You know, I'm part of the defunding the GRPD and giving that money back to the black community. Um, to heal and to um, deal with problems in a proactive way instead of to the police. But this too, just as the family wants, just as Breonna Taylor's family wants, is a way for justice. It's about how do we change the landscape of our city so that it actually reflects um, not a Monroe, but a Breonna Taylor, who was um, working two jobs, studying for her EMT. Um, trying to move forward with her life. Um, how do we really center what her family wants and who she is? And how do we make that a centerpiece of Grand Rapids as far as where we want to go when we move forward? Um, and so that's why I really support this, um, and support the family in renaming the street to Breonna Taylor Way. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
My name is Stacy Nichols. I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I am calling to express my support for the commemorative designation of Breonna Taylor Way on Monroe Center. I am in support of Breonna Taylor's memory and supporting her family. And at minimum, this would be symbolism. What the real ask has been futilely is for justice for her life. However, we are asking for symbolism in her hometown to recognize um, the service that she gave. Um, the, the dignity of her life that was ended so tragically in commemoration of that. Um, this is not about black or white. This is not about black versus blue. This is about sanctity and the value of human life and humanity. I believe everyone has a moral compass and to tilt towards what is just and unjust. That is left in the heart of the beholder. However, um, again, this is really about seeking justice. Um, but at the very minimum, commemoration is what this was symbolized. This is symbolism. This does not equal justice. This is a request for symbolically stating that this young woman was from the city of Grand Rapids. And at the very minimum, we are supporting that we are designating, not changing the name of the street, but designating commemoratively, designating this street Monroe Center as Breonna Taylor Way to symbolize what her life did mean to humanity as a whole and on a smaller scale to the city of Grand Rapids. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Dana Moreno. I'm from Grand Rapids and I live in the Third Ward. And I'm calling to say that I oppose the decision to rename Monroe Center to Breonna Taylor Way. Um, when I think of commemorating someone, I think of Rosa Parks. I think of Martin Luther King, Cesar Chavez. I don't think of Breonna Taylor. Her life does not epitomize anything that I would want any of our youth to look up to. Death, her death was tragic and horrible. However, it does not give us any reason to um, revere her as a hero in any way. And I believe that um, her affiliation with her friends and all the evidence that's coming out to her lifestyle does not promote any of those things that you have already even spoke of earlier in this meeting as to why you would want um, um, special land use with the youth centers. Uh, for the same reason, I would not want my youth looking up to Breonna Taylor as something to strive towards. Uh, she, there is no justice that needs to be done on behalf. And justice does not come naming a street after them. If we need to rename a street to commemorate someone, we'd be better off naming it Helen Clayder and doing the history behind her life and what she represented to Grand Rapids. The first elected black woman president of the YWCA in Grand Rapids. Um, that to me is someone to look up to. So those are my thoughts. Again, I oppose the naming of Monroe Center to Breonna Taylor Way. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your work. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
My name is Luke Martin. I live in southwest side of Grand Rapids. Can you hear me okay?
I can. Go ahead caller.
Okay. And uh, I want to call in and just say I don't agree with renaming Monroe Center Breonna Taylor. I want to agree with the sentiments from some of the other callers that it was a tragedy, her death. Um, and that you really need to look, the, the City Commission really needs to look at the facts of the, of the case. Look, look at what's been coming out. More and more details have been coming out. And you can see that um, just surrounding it. Look at what, look at what happened. Look at, look at who she was with. She was not in her bed when she died. Um, the guy she was with, I don't know if it was a boyfriend, but he was the one who shot first. The officers involved, um, they did, they had a no knock warrant, but they didn't operate that. They did knock. Even the guy that shot at them said that they knocked. He said that they didn't announce who they were. The police officers said they did announce that they were police officers. And then uh, how is it that he was the one shooting at the police officers, but he wasn't hit at all? He was, he got hit by a single bullet. So I mean, look at the, look at the details of the case. This is a very emotional case in our nation right now. Look at, and like the first caller said, go to the Facebook page for this organization that is rallying for this petition. And see, look exactly, it says if you, if you support Trump right now, you're supporting, you're supporting homophobia and all this and other stuff. That is division. That is not unity that we need as a city right now. Just go and look. Justice for Black Lives and you're gonna, what's gonna come up? Just Google results, Black Lives Matter movement, go to the website. Look what they're standing for. Who destroyed, who just like, look at these uh, so-called peaceful protests that destroyed the city. I was down there after they destroyed the city, after the city. I'm not saying all the peaceful protests were responsible for the riots, but just the pattern that Black Lives Matter being around the country now, destroying a lot of cities, causing a lot of problems, time after time, causing a lot of destruction. This is not the unity that we need for our city. This is only going to cause more division. So I'm totally against it. So that's my, that's my opinion. I'm just taking it as it is. But do the research and make a decision based on facts, not based on an emotional response to a progressive revolution is what they're calling. So thank you for your time.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, this is Helen Martin. I live in the city of Grand Rapids. Um, I would like to give my approval to um, giving uh, the commemorative road to Breonna Taylor. I think it's very deserving. I think that the city should also pay for it and uh, to help maintain it as well. Um, basically that's all that I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Joseph Kylama. I am a resident in Third Ward, city of Grand Rapids. I am calling to enthusiastically support the renaming of Monroe Center Breonna Taylor Way. I'm very glad to hear that the family is supportive and I'm glad that this stretch of the street runs directly along alongside Rosa Parks Circle. I think that Breonna's killing, like Rosa Parks' courage, has drawn awareness to the racist oppression that is baked into our system in the United States and has sparked a movement. Um, in June, I had the honor of being part of a group that held a 24-hour vigil for what would have been Breonna's birthday. Um, right there at Rosa Parks Circle, we wrote her name in chalk on the sidewalk and on the street. Um, and at the end of that event, members local and Ashnabe community performed a jingle dress healing dance on that street. I can think of, well, I can think of some better ways, but it would be an amazing way to honor her legacy to rename that section of the street after her. As others have noted, I think this can be performative, but I do hope that this happens. Uh, it's also fitting that it runs right in front of the police station. I hope officers reflect on the life of Breonna Taylor whenever they leave that building. And that whenever city leaders walk that stretch of Breonna Taylor Way, they recommit to reforming our city's budget priorities and to reimagining public safety in the city of Grand Rapids by enthusiastically support um, the, the motion. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Dana Montgomery. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids in the Third Ward. And I'm calling to express my support of renaming Monroe Center to Breonna Taylor Way. Uh, Breonna Taylor was a product of Grand Rapids and regardless of opinion, Breonna Taylor should still be here. The city of Grand Rapids boasts about being committed to equity, but doesn't often demonstrate actions of that commitment. But the city of Grand Rapids has no problem demonstrating their commitment to upholding white supremacy. We've seen that time and time again. While changing the name won't bring justice for Breonna, it is a way to stand against the injustice of her murder and honor her legacy. Breonna Taylor deserves to be honored and her family deserves to have her honored. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, this is Nikki Tram and I am from Grand Rapids. I am calling today to overwhelmingly support the change of Monroe Center to Breonna Taylor Way. Um, Breonna Taylor is from Grand Rapids. She still has family, friends and deep roots here. She was beloved in this city, still is. And she, through the terrible circumstances that happened to her, has changed the course of history, the history of this nation and even the world. It was just reported in NPR that places as far away as France are now dealing with a racial reckoning because of the Black Lives Matter movement. And that's because of Breonna's impact. Um, this would be a way to show respect to her family and friends and the community and honor her legacy as a frontline worker and a victim of state sponsored violence. And this would be a great reminder to everyone in the city as a whole that we will not forget. Um, those of us that, this is a community and we won't forget when one of us is stolen, that we'll fight for each other and we'll remember each other. Um, this would not be justice for her. This would be a gesture, but one that can work to heal and pave a way forward as Breonna Taylor's family and community continues to mourn this loss. That is all.
Thank you caller. Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? You have three minutes. Yep, thank you. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Al Willis. I'm the president and founder of Citizens Leadership Council. I'm Grand Rapids, Michigan. I also live in Grand Rapids, Michigan as well. Um, just wanted to call in and say that Citizens Leadership Council stands in solidarity uh, with the family of Breonna Taylor as well as the organizations that have spoke tonight, Justice for Black Lives and uh, FOE, Family Over Everything. Uh, we call in support of the name designation. Um, we feel that not only would it elevate Breonna Taylor, but it would, it would elevate her family and give them a platform uh, to be able to speak from, to call attention and awareness to other injustices that continue to happen uh, after Breonna Taylor's uh, death. to other injustices that continue to happen after Breonna Taylor's death. With that, the street would create discussion and awareness. Kids would ask questions. Visitors would come from out of town to come and see that. It would create revenue for the city. I think that the business owners down, down that street, I would be glad to hear from them because I believe that they would be all for this. Again, I believe that it could be a place where people would come and pay respects because as the family have noted on this call that is from Grand Rapids, there is a lot of Breonna's family that still lives here in Grand Rapids as well as, Breonna was a hero. She was on the front lines and she was working to further her career. She was an EMP working to become a nurse. She was robbed in that. She was robbed of that by the system that these organizations, CLP as well as Justice for Black Lives and, and FOE, we're fighting against that and here in Grand Rapids as well as throughout the country. We believe that creating this designation would be a great place for the, the city and you as the commission to show your solidarity and a willingness to be able to come to the table and actually give a little, just like we're willing to give, we're willing to have conversations. You know, the one thing that I would add just in comparison to this is Breonna made it to the cover of Oprah magazine. I believe that GR giving Breonna a name of a street here is the very least that, that we can do as a city, especially considering that her family still lives here. Citizens Leadership Council is looking forward to helping facilitate the family in any way possible. We have ideas of Breonna Taylor Day, of Breonna Taylor Parade. This would just be the beginning. In closing, I will say that I've heard some other callers calling saying that we should change its name to, to something else. Citizens Leadership Council will be glad to help any other citizen that feels there is an honorary name that should be placed in the city of Grand Rapids, but this one is for Breonna Taylor. And we believe that this name change would create a conversation around gun safety, police interactions, racial inequities and so much more. And the last thing that I would say is I would like to remind everyone also that BLM the organization-
Caller, that's three minutes. Thank you caller.
Is not the same as BLM the movement. Thank you, commission.
Thank you. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, I'm Teresa Taylor. I'm calling from Grand Rapids, Michigan, and I'm calling in support of my niece Breonna Taylor and her family. Yes, being a family we were lost, best friend, we would love to see her name on our, our real center as a way to honor and remember group. Thank you to the city of Grand Rapids, you're consideration. Thank you all and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Can you please lower the volume on your device?
Yes.
Thank you. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Hello, this is Martha Cooper. I'm a Grand Rapids resident. I'm a little shook up over the last call. At any rate, so, so many important things, especially her family. And I want to kind of address that one of the sticking points and the only one that they've even talked about seems to be political. The investigation has been politicized. The whole movement toward justice for black lives. I'm not talking about Black Lives Matter. I'm talking about our local folks here with their group that want to see change so that they don't have to fear for their children and themselves. We do need change and we've needed it even before all of this and that's why we see so many people keeping on with it. But that's not about that. This renaming is for Breonna Taylor and she mattered and she was somebody to look up to. She had nothing but a boyfriend that was legally caring. There's all kinds of questions in all of this. It doesn't matter. She was a frontline worker. She was a daughter. She was one of us. She was ours. My neighbors mattered to me. I didn't know her, but I know these folks and one of the things I wanted to say was I kept thinking about the renaming of streets as an honor. One of the things that's underneath all of this anger and is pain. And I have pain watching what's going on with the police departments across the country, but she was ours first and foremost. She was an honorable person. Growing up, she was so young and she won't get, give her, you know, children to her family. And we need to do something to soothe some pain, just like when they renamed the street to Breonna Taylor. How much pain was there then? That man died in the function of his duty and that's painful. So, I just wanted to support one step forward, one step forward and to, to acknowledge that that's part of it too. And, but you know, she mattered and she was, she, she mattered to us and she is now forever a part of the new civil rights move that we're having way too late. And that's all I have.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Kennedy O'Connor. I'm from Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm calling in favor of Breonna Taylor Way as she is a Grand Rapids native. Regardless of our political affiliations, as the first man said, her death was a tragedy. On that note, I'd like to advise you to remember that Martin Luther King Jr. and the civil rights movement were also once knew as promoting division and violence. Well, as we know the truth of now, pursuing peace and equality. With that now in mind, I challenge the city to position Grand Rapids on the right side of history as they did once with the establishment of Martin Luther King Park. I believe changing the name would permanently commemorate her legacy, which brought forth an outright support for justice and an emboldened sense of community in Grand Rapids. As someone so influential and inspirational to not only Grand Rapids, but the nation as a whole, I believe the minimum the city could do would be doing great for her memory in our city. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Good evening, Washington, Miller Beck. I believe a matter, city notice on the name change failed to address stakeholder citizens who patronized city buses or streetcars for 68 years on the Monroe Center transit lineup. This matter is significant enough that it should go to a citywide referendum. First, this is just a crude power grab by, an aftermath of looting riots. When I get it over with the change, this, this name goes back, Monroe goes back 182 years. Why not get it over with and just change it to Ma-Bruel Center? Out of some 196 world capitals in the world and 206 Olympic areas, Monrovia, Monrovia is the only capital city named after the leader of another nation, another was Liberia. That's a much of President Monroe, they named their capital, Monrovia after him. The Monroe Doctrine scared off France from Mexico, 1867, and the Soviet Union from Cuba in 1962. Doctrine also shielded some two dozen Latin nations for freedom building going on, well, third century now. Deviant city officials here already stole the honorable name of Camp House Square. Camp House was not only our city founder, he was also World War of 1812 veteran fighting British invasion of Michigan. Under more anti atheism, three of the four Polaski Square signs were, were removed by bigots at Diamond insulting veterans, Polonia and Catholic America. Why didn't the city engineer mention that, Polaski Square? 1778, General Polaski was America's first general officer to die in combat. During our last, last world war, Catholic America sustained 43% of US combat deaths. White flag surrender slogans here, gray Catholics don't matter, veterans go home, whites stay out, only black terrorists matters. It's been a hell of a half-century for US veterans. Did Ms. Taylor or her friends ever call for bringing Catholic bus routes and our room at so-called Central Station back to Camp House Square? Or have they even supported the six black routes that are also buried beneath the wealthy violence? This one starts crusade they're on, runs some 16 years trying to get black bus routes back downtown, 123514. If Polaski Square signs are not replaced, this veteran will crusade for renaming all of Michigan Street Polaski Square, Polaski Parkway. So, so-called Medical Mile, Hill Hill still remains less than a medical mile. Thank you ever so much.
That's three minutes. Thank you. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
KT, Grand Rapids. Also, I believe that everything. I definitely support the decision and I think it's well deserved. Much more need to be done and as we always say, justice on peace. Free way and I support it.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Janice Rostick and I am the paternal grandmother of Breonna Taylor. Her biological father is my son. I would like to first say thank you for taking my call. My decision on the name added to Monroe Center, I'm in decisis. And the reason why is because I think Breonna, and I'm not here to talk about the deaths, is very worthy of having. And if not Monroe Center not added, she deserves to have her name on a street. And if not Monroe Center, would you be able, would you be willing to consider another street? Ionia Avenue, for instance. My next thing I want to say is no one, no one should have to lose their life for their life to matter. We've never, the family, the Taylor family, Rostick family, we never have been contacted by anyone except the news media from different states as well as the Grand Rapids press. No organization has reached out to the Taylor family. This is not just a one-sided issue. Breonna Taylor had a mother and a father. And we have not been given an opportunity to speak or even asked a question, just greed, which much pain and it hurts. So, I would like to ask, would you please postpone this decision for a later time so maybe the family, both sides could come together or even the organization? I've been at this in the third ward for 43 years. My address hasn't changed and no one, organizations, Tamika Palmer's side have reached out to us. And so, I would like to say Breonna been deserved this, but she deserves so much more. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Can you please lower the volume on your device? You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Good evening, my name is Edwin Marino. I'm in the third ward and I just wanted to first start with, I have my thoughts and prayers go out to Breonna and her family. This should have never occurred as it did and any loss is a tragic loss and from what little I know of her life, she spent a lot of time doing a lot of good for a lot of people. I also, through the course of hearing about this tragedy, came across information about some choices that maybe they, maybe weren't so good, but weren't her fault necessarily. But her old boyfriend was a target of an investigation of the police department and was a known drug dealer and weapons trafficking leader in Louisville. And because of that, the police had placed a tracking device on his car and that then determined that he had made frequent stops at Breonna's apartment, leading the police to believe that she was also involved with this. Now, maybe she wasn't. I, I have no idea. Hopefully she wasn't. But being associated with him put her in danger. And her ex-boyfriend also expressed that, that he, that she handled some money for him as well and that she even posted bond for another individual that was in the drug ring. That brings us to her current boyfriend, Kenneth Walker, who admitted shooting first, standing right beside Breonna, unfortunately, at the end of the hall and six bullets struck Breonna. None of them hit her boyfriend. It's a little bit odd that that was the case and it's not yet to be determined whether Breonna was being used as a shield as he shot. But the grand jury testimony and all the evidence is going to be revealed here over the next week or two. And I think that before a decision is made, that we should look at all the evidence, all the, all the information in regards to the situation. And I lost my brother in Cancun many years ago and so I know firsthand how somebody being ripped away from your family at a very young age can be very emotional. But we need to look at all the information. Not naming a street after her is not going to bring her back. Let's think this through. Let's do what's right for everybody involved and let's leave a legacy of true justice.
Caller, that's three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Casey Thompson. I'm the youth director for Justice for Black Lives. I am calling on behalf of, on support of changing Monroe Center to Breonna Taylor Way. It's important because not only is Breonna Taylor a native to Grand Rapids, but much of her family still resides here. Those family members and our organizations have worked together. We have been at several events, not only in Grand Rapids, but we have communicated and linked with them for other protests and events in Kentucky, in Washington DC. Breonna Taylor was working frontline as an EMP worker when she was brutally murdered by police. Here in Grand Rapids, the city commission, the city committee, everyone involved continuously brings up the fact that they would like to build trust and a relationship with the community. So, right now, we are during, we are in what is the biggest civil rights movement in world history, Breonna Taylor being the female face for that. We are willing to pay for the name change as some sort of recognition, as a small step that we can do for our community and to say no is not a way to build that trust. It doesn't come out of your pocket. It doesn't affect you and it's not justice at all, but it's our small way. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Madeline Mendez. I live in Grand Rapids. I am calling in to support the request to make the commemorative change to the street name. I do believe that justice does not come from renaming a street. This is a symbol. It's just a small symbol. Um, this is a, an easy, small change that we can make. Um, if we cannot make this simple, small change, what message does that send? What symbol does that show? If we can't make this small, simple change, does it show that we do not support working for justice, for peace, for life, for all of the people, for our community? So please, thank you for taking the time to listen to me. Thank you for listening to the community on this. Um, please think hard when you make this decision of what message you are sending if we can't make a simple change, a tiny step towards justice. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Susan Smith, and I live in Grand Rapids. And I just wanted to talk about the vote on bringing Brianna Taylor Way as an honorary street. Um, I am also with Justice for Black Lives, and I just wanted to notate that back in June, us as a group and the family, we petitioned to get the street name changed, and we did receive about four thousand signatures. Uh, Brianna Taylor was born and raised here. She was fighting on the front line during a global pandemic, um, and was tragically taken away from her family. So I do feel that we need to have a street name in honor of her. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Can you please lower the volume on your device? Hello, caller?
Oh, hi.
Yep, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
My, my name is Kena Birch. I am Brianna Taylor's aunt, on her father's side, the Taylor side. I am for the name change of the street. We appreciate all the prayers and the positive input and thoughts. And let's not make this about, um, skin color or judgment of what the, the reports, the reporters are putting out there. Let's make this about my niece. She was a beautiful, bold, bright, brilliant person that loved everybody. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate the support. And I hope that everybody can come together and agree, make an agreement on changing the street name. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? Thank you. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Chrissy Carlin Kenech, and I live in the Third Ward of Grand Rapids. Brianna Taylor will never receive the justice that she deserves, and I am calling to support renaming Monroe Center to Brianna Taylor Way. By doing this, I believe that we make a statement that Grand Rapids will not forget. As a city, we must, we must not miss this opportunity to show her family and the children being raised here that Brianna's murder has sparked a movement that will inspire people from every walk of life to be unified, to embrace them. Our country is at a reckoning point. We've lost too many black and brown lives due to the system, policies, and practices that led to her death. As a mother, I want my children to know that their city honored the name and legacy of Brianna Taylor. As they grow up here where she was raised, I want them to be proud that we fought together through grief. We took a stand, supported her family, and stood as an example to the country. The time to act on this is now. I think history has its eyes on us. Thank you so much for taking my comment.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, um, good evening. My name is Sarah Williams. I am a member of Justice for Black Lives, and I live in Grand Rapids. I am calling to support the name change of Monroe Center to Brianna Taylor Way. Would I am not in support of all these people coming on the call and claiming to know the information of Brianna, saying that she is not someone to look up to, but she is. She was a beautiful, black, educated woman who was taken too soon from us. Um, I'm not supportive of all these racist commentators saying that they know better, when in reality they don't. So I, I hope that there is justice for Bree, and the name change is the least, the least that the city can do for Brianna and her family. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? Thank you. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Yede Bunka. I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And I just, uh, wanted to say, like, I feel very sorry for Brianna Taylor's death. However, I don't think that this makes her here or so with that. I oppose, uh, the change of names to Brianna Taylor. Thank you very much. Bye.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hey, my name is Sabrina Minaric, and I live in the city of Grand Rapids. I am calling to express my support to change Monroe Center to Brianna Taylor Way. Um, I believe that now is the best time ever for Grand Rapids to set an example. Um, for a very, very long time, I feel the city has, um, just been a lot of talk and taken very, very little action to make sure that the black people in our community feel seen and heard, and this is a very low-hanging fruit and a good start and easy way to do that. Um, Brianna Taylor's life mattered, and this would be a small step for the city to begin to show the black people are valued within our community. Um, I know many people on the opposing party have buttered off facts, mostly talking about her boyfriend or ex-boyfriend. Brianna, Brianna was an EMT and working hard to help others. Um, and again, the people she hung out with or did or did not associate with is not the fact of the matter tonight. People need to stop listening to Fox News and reading more information to get the facts straight. Brianna Taylor was an innocent woman taken too soon by America's longstanding pandemic police brutality. And I believe that, again, this is something the city of Grand Rapids should feel obligated to do, um, just to start repairing relations with the black people within the community. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Kaya Taylor, the community outreach director of Justice for Black Lives. Brianna's aunt and educator. Um, I just want to say, June 5th, 1993, God created a beautiful soul, placed her on earth. Um, March 13th, 2020, she made her transition and became a hero to the world. Um, she was a very iconic figure here in Grand Rapids, and for all the children to see that, um, change is coming, justice is coming for her. It is an honor and a privilege on behalf of the Taylor family, the Palmer, and the Palmer family, that, uh, we honor her with this street. Um, I hope you guys consider, um, and I want to thank you guys so much.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hey, Daniel Hoples. It's Jim Arzola.
Hi, Mr. Arzola. Go ahead.
Hey, it's, 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 uh, I think Joe Jones, uh, gave you credit for your job well done during the pandemic. I do too. I've listened to a few of the meetings, and I've tried to interact. I, uh, agree with Reverend Moody and Sanita Lanier. I think this thing we need to approach with caution. Brianna Taylor, I went to school with Deborah Taylor. I knew Sheila Gordon. I believe these are family members. And she, no doubt, is one of our own, and there has been an injustice with the taking of her life. But there also is another injustice. It's people trying to capitalize by her death and prompted to name a street. I think that we could do better, and I think collectively, our mayor, our city manager, and our commissioners could think of something better. One of the individuals that called in said that the naming of the street would bring people to spend money, and I think that's sad, and we should do it for the right reason. And once again, I would like to believe that Reverend Moody, born and raised here, a black representative for African-American of our community, would know what right is to do for our black community, along with Sanita Lanier. I think we need to be cautious. Other people are trying to capitalize off her death, and that's sad. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Mayor, there are no more callers in the queue.
Thank you, Daniel. I'm going to go ahead and close that public comment period. I want to thank everyone who called in, uh, especially, uh, Brianna Taylor's family for calling in. Uh, and this will be referred to Committee of the Whole. All right, that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment tonight. Uh, and this is public comment on any other items that were not on our agenda. Uh, and so I'll open that up. Again, if you're listening, you would call in to 456-3000 or 311, hit number one, and then number five. Uh, so Daniel, do we have anyone in the queue for our last opportunity for public comment?
We do, Mayor. Here's the first caller.
Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
How you doing? This is DeAndre. So again, I say, you're Grand Rapids. I've been giving you guys a call because of, uh, my community project, and a grant that I won years ago, the Christian Award across the community, the Christian Award, uh, part of the culture, one of the members of the award ceremony. And so, uh, I ended up winning the award for my project that I created in the city of Grand Rapids. I reached out to Larry Johnson, who is the head of safety and security, uh, for the Grand Rapids Public Schools, and I got a retro on the building for the Adelante, uh, High School. They won $350,000 building, and so my goal with this, uh, project is to be able to develop a full-fledged facility, LEED certified type of building. I will be reaching out to, uh, the commissioners and the mayor for letters of support, um, meeting with a tax specialist sometime next week, so I can actually see how much revenues I can actually generate from this project. I'm actually trying to reinvest my profits into public education, into infrastructure, into employees, into the youth, into creating grants for other, um, bosses and keeping as many young adults and kids off the streets and adults off the streets and, um, trying to find peace. Uh, not too many, uh, community centers that are actually built from the ground up, uh, by African-American people, and we talk about, uh, creating real equity and real opportunity. Um, I'm doing everything that I can to bring awareness to this project. Uh, I will be going on to Miranda, where you live, for this project, uh, with my merchandise that I have made. Um, I will be having my merchandise on the, uh, set with Miranda on the six, so be looking out for that. I'm definitely just trying to be a positive role model, uh, continuously, uh, putting positive energy out there to the universe and just trying to be a positive role model in the city. So be expecting, uh, me to be reaching out to you guys as I'm, uh, getting all my steps in a row and trying to find out how much revenues and how much money I can bring to the city of Grand Rapids, into this project. This is something I'm very passionate about. I'm very passionate about giving back. I'm, I'm a giver. I'm just extremely passionate about just creating real wealth and real opportunities for the next generation, not just me, but just, just everybody that I can create something and give an opportunity to. So, um, I just wanted to let you guys know I won an award, uh, the Community Hustler of the Year. Um, I believe that award is well-deserved and many accolades, uh, things will come from this work and the project that I've created. Uh, and I just wanted to tell you guys, have a good night, and I will be reaching out to you guys for letters of support, um, anything that you want to see from the project, or any pieces, or anything that you want to see, I'll definitely bring it to you.
Thank you, caller. Thank you, caller. That's three minutes. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Good evening. Watchdog Miller. Uh, again, I made a phone request to go to a referendum on the, uh, name change matter and, uh, see why the referendum, I think, will go down eighty to eighty-five percent, and so it's a formal challenge on it. I also submitted a second back comment, uh, today, uh, into Hong Kong, cool double deckers, uh, on both sides of the street over there. Those are red and black, just like in London. Think how cool it would be, uh, if it were running down our streets like Ionia or, or Ottawa. The new six thousand models in, uh, running Lake Michigan, uh, uh, there's no air on them, okay? They should be pulled from service because, uh, they're basically rolling, uh, COVID incubators, uh, but no ventilation whatsoever. Uh, the ten ninety series was fine, best numbers, and the, uh, ninety silver line, but it changed with the new eleven hundred buses and, and the, now the six thousand blue buses, uh, and no ventilation. You may have noticed this scandal they made USA Today where, uh, the, uh, pandemic numbers are so high at Tran Valley State, maybe having a Thursday edition of the, uh, US Today on the stage. Uh, thank you ever so much, and, uh, the answer is, uh, double deckers, just like to Hong Kong, London, Las Vegas, but with windows that open. Um, thank you ever so much. Watchdog Miller reporting. Please have a nice weekend right now.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Mark. I'm from Grand Rapids. Yes, um, I'm not going to talk about the commemorative designation because I think the people have spoken. Then the vast majority, and the vast majority wants it, so I'm not even going to, I'm not going to comment on what I want, what I want and what I don't want. But the same, but I'm going to come, I'm coming at it from a different angle. Now, if the designation is approved, something, I'm, I'm afraid something is going to happen. It's going to be the same thing like you're down in Mississippi, when you have white supremacists destroying the Emmett Till Memorial down there near the Tatchet River in Mississippi. And they had to replace that, and they had to replace that sign about four or five times. And this, and, and the supremacists are still doing it. Now, if this, if this commemorative designation is approved, I feel something similar could happen. So, so you better be careful. Because there are white supremacist vandals here in Grand Rapids. And they're going to do, and they're going to try to do everything in their power to destroy the government. You know, I, I, I hate to say that, but that's just the truth. And the truth of the matter is this. I'm in favor of it, but there could be problems after the approval. So you better watch out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Dana. I'm from the Third Ward, and I just wanted to comment on the increased violence in our area and that I'm greatly concerned. I moved here from Chicago in the nineties, nurse practitioner, used to work with gang kids in Chicago. I first contacted Karen Larson to see if I could get involved with the, um, gang community in Grand Rapids. She put me in contact with Wayne Wu, detective. Worked here when it was just neighborhood gangs. They weren't affiliated with the national gangs like Vice Lords and Latin Kings. However, I've seen more and more of those gang groups move into Grand Rapids by watching the tagging going on in the buildings. At that time, when I moved here, there were three hundred and eighty police officers on the force. We are currently down to two ninety. And you want to propose And you want to propose to get it down to two twenty? That gravely concerns me and all the violence that I've seen and the uprising and the lack of police to take care of it. I do not support defunding the police. I think we need to embrace the police department. I think we need to give them more so that they can adequately service Grand Rapids. I'm not opposed to putting social workers on staff. I think that's a great idea, but I do know that we cannot get rid of our police officers. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? Thank you. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
My name is Al, the president of Citizens Leadership Council here in Grand Rapids, as well as the resident of Grand Rapids. Commissioner, I first wanted to clarify my statement earlier. I believe it's been taken out of context. What I stated earlier was that if we were to rename the road or give it a commemorative designation, that would encourage people to come here to pay their respect and to possibly, you know, engage with the Taylor family. That in turn, those people have to stay somewhere. Obviously, there would be revenue brought into the city. Don't use, don't try to find the one negative that you could find in my statement and try and flip it for negatives. I serve a powerful God that takes all things done for evil and turns them for good. And so I just wanted to clarify that statement. And furthermore, to the previous caller, these are other issues that we need to work on in the city. There needs to be a relationship built between the police department and the community itself. There are organizations in this city, such as the organizations that have called into this line tonight, that are eagerly awaiting these people who are calling into this line tonight, that have all these grand ideas that they want to create change in the city. Please connect with us. Find us on Facebook, you know, reach out to us. Ask, you know, the media, they have connections, they're relationship to us. Ask the police department to put you in contact with the leaders of these organizations before you judge us and before you decide that you know what we're about. Give us that time. Commissioner, we encourage you to reach out to us. We want to seek a relationship and be here at Citizens Leadership Council. We want to be a liaison between the community and the government officials. Mayor Bliss, we've reached out to you on several occasions. We would appreciate you reaching back to us. My name is Al J Willis on Facebook for any of you that want to find me and create real positive change in the city. Thank you, Commissioner, for your time, and thank you for this public comment section.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Bates, and I'm the president and founder of Just for Black Lives. I just wanted to come back and clarify, Just for Black Lives is not capitalizing at all whatsoever on the street name change. In fact, we refuse to move forward with the petition without the family's approval. That's all pretty much I wanted to say. The family approved of this. We did this for the family, not for ourselves, in memory of Breonna Taylor. And thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Can you please lower the volume on your device?
Yes, sorry. This is Jessica Van Barker Miller again with Just for Black Lives. I would like to also speak on the street name and the community that the police department is claiming to want to build with their community, the trust that needs to be built up. One, I would like to reiterate exactly what Alyssa reiterated, is we are not capitalizing on this. We have stood with the family since the beginning, and we would like to see the street name changed over to Breonna Taylor. As far as building trust with the community, you can't build trust with the community if you're pushing out more police officers into the streets only to brutalize our community. That's not how that works. You also cannot build trust with our community if you are arresting silent protesters or peaceful protesters. That is also not how that works. And you cannot take the things they say and twist them into something that they're not in order to build trust. That's not how that works. We have multiple times reached out to Chief Payne. We have also multiple times reached out to other leaders in the community to be able to build that trust. However, they have not followed through with anything that they've stood for, so we have began marching again, and we will continue to do so until we see real change and real reform. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, caller. Mayor, there are no more callers in the queue.
Thank you, Daniel. All right, I'll go ahead and close that public comment period and turn to my colleagues. So why don't I start tonight with Commissioner Moody?
I had a premonition you were going to call me first. First of all, let me just say thank you for everybody calling in tonight. It's an honor to hear people from the community voice their opinion on all matters, and I am in favor of listening to all of our callers. I just want to thank you. I want to thank the chief for the report that he gave today, the city manager's report on where we're going with the city in terms of our strategic plan for the police department. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the plan that we have put in place as a commission for our city. Thank you, Madam Mayor. With that, have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rappert?
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have a whole lot to say tonight. I do appreciate everybody that called in. Want to make sure to just acknowledge the pain that the black community continues to experience as justice continues to not be served. And I do want to just appreciate the lion's share of work that the city staff put together to give us our performance update today, and also to the chief and his team for their openness to incorporating feedback from the community into the strategic plan. That was a representation of a year's worth of work crammed into a few months. And so deeply appreciative of the staff and the police department for their effort in this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well said. Commissioner Lanier?
Thank you to everyone who called, and especially on the public hearing, to express, most of which was in favor and support of the renaming. And I look forward to having some dialogue with Pastor Commissioner Moody, myself, and city manager Washington, especially about the grandmother who has shared that she hasn't been contacted, just to kind of talk through that element. And I'm appreciative of the comments and the feedback. Good night. And there's a debate on it. I'm trying to get this.
Thanks, Commissioner. I think we'd all like to catch some of that. How about Commissioner O'Connor? No? Okay. Commissioner Isasi?
Thank you, Mayor. I too share my thanks for the presentation today and all the work that went into everything that we are doing. I am, you know, especially grateful to our city staff. There's so many of you that are doing this work, who are also trying to do virtual schools and keep yourselves in good spirit. So it's just, I just wanted to share that thought. I also want to, this is, we're in the middle of Latino Heritage Month, Granite Heritage Month, and I want to especially give a shout out to, you know, Ms. Stout talked about the employee resource groups that were created at the city, and there's a number of them. And I was glad to see an event that our city manager will be speaking at this weekend with Star Garden, and I think it's also a DJRI. It's going to feature a panel of local Latinos talking about what it means to be Latino in Grand Rapids. So, you know, we had the proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day. We're celebrating and recognizing Latino Heritage Month and just remembering that, you know, the contributions in our community do not, you know, I believe they're not just in one month, but this is a month to elevate those. So I wanted to highlight that and thank Ms. Stout for the work of those resource groups as well. And then just secondly, I just wanted to remind people, thank you so much for responding to the drop boxes that we had for our upcoming November election. Our city clerk sent us a picture over the weekend of a drop box in the second ward that on Saturday had a number of ballots already returned. So hopefully people are getting those and doing their research. You know, there's a number of things on the ballot, obviously at the national level, but I always want to encourage people to look at that local level because there are a number of things, including two ballot proposals for the city. So I encourage everybody to do the research, to ask questions. And I know Joel's probably going to give an update too, right at the end about some other expanded times. I feel like I'm looking at you through the camera, Joel, but to respond, but just like to remind people about the election piece. It's just so important, and we are coming very close. So thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. We begin by giving a shout out to our city manager and staff for their update on this morning with the performance management report. Also want to recognize Chief Payne and his report on this morning regarding the strategic plan. And again, I want to recognize his leadership through these rather tumultuous times and the work of the department and leaning in, especially with the uptick in community violence and their ability to solve the crimes. Also, I want to congratulate Joel Hendorp and his staff for a grant that he was successful in securing for the election. I want to give thumbs up to our city clerk, Mr. Hendorp. And lastly, I really, I want to thank all of those who called in this evening, in particular those who called in during the public hearing. And I will say that in, for some of what I heard, there was actually grieved because there's this, there just seems to be this inability to, I think, for some in our community to actually practice anything resembling empathy, but instead wanting to really participate in revisionist history and somehow, some way, find the bad in someone's life. And I'm just, I'm waiting to meet the individual or the individuals who seem to always find the bad in someone else and what they've done and can't seem to perhaps find the bad in themselves. And I just find it to be sad that we continue to have those in our community who feel the need, again, to create their own narrative about Ms. Taylor. And it is, again, it's worth grieving for because the woman is dead. She is not here to respond to such foolishness, and yet we have those in our community who want to come with their take on what her life was really like and speak to the fact that maybe she's not worthy of receiving any recognition. And so to those, I say, just perhaps take a good, hard look into yourselves and maybe, again, take a look into the dictionary and look at the word empathy and maybe reconsider your thoughts and your words. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. And how about I start with our deputy city attorney, Mr. Strom? Any comments tonight?
No, thank you. Honored to be with you on the dais this evening and appreciate you all sticking through it.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you for your work. City clerk, you want to give us a little update and tell us anything about the upcoming election, which is just five weeks away, five weeks from today?
Thank you, Mayor. So it's been a whirl, obviously, since we received our absentee ballots. We put in city clerk staff and election workers and various others came in, and city staff. Thank you to city manager and city staff for helping get out those, the initial forty-six thousand absentee ballots by the time that they had to be out. And they went out of the mail last Thursday, and they hit mailboxes sixteen hours later on Friday. So thank you to KCI, whose mail service we were using to get those out in that fast amount of time. And then, obviously, as Mr. Isasi mentioned, they hit the drop boxes. Every ward did very well starting to return ballots, so FYI. But I think that it just gives another opportunity. We've had lots of questions from voters. Are they safe? Are they secure? Yes, they are. They're secured to the ground. We have cameras on them. And so we've been using a drop box at three hundred Ottawa for several elections. This just gives more options. Where our staff has emptied them multiple times during the day. We've had voters ask, well, what time are you emptying them? Well, I don't divulge that because for the safety of my staff, we don't want people knowing when they're going to be going around. So just so you're aware of that. So we keep continuing to get absentee ballots applications in the mail. The challenge of COVID and everything else is, and we have, you know, a combination of COVID and the proposal three, any person is eligible for an absentee ballot. And it's putting, our staff is working hard. We're doing, we're in kind of an overtime mode now, probably now till election. So our staff is working really hard. We've hired five temporary employees, and we've got another one that will be starting as well, just to deal with the sheer volume of absentees because not only is that, but we, you know, you add on executive orders and the state's response to different things and laws and things have been tweaked, and then you have judge rulings. So trying to, and then state laws being changed during the middle of all of this. So we're trying to navigate through all that. So your city clerk staff is working not completely around the clock, but almost there, but every day. Starting Thursday, we will be, starting Thursday through the whole month of October, we'll be open Tuesdays and Thursdays from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at both locations, at City Hall and at Election Central, to give voters some more options for those who can't get to the office during other hours. And then also, we have a couple special events coming up. Sunday, October eleventh, from noon to five, will be a New Hope Baptist Church doing a voter registration absentee ballot event. It's our first time trying something outdoors. So thank you to Kathy Harris and proactive community partners for putting that together. And then October twenty-five, we'll have another event like that, but it'll be at City Hall. We're trying to figure out, we're putting the finishing touches on Election Day and the day before. We just know a lot of people come and register vote. So by plea of voters, if you're not registered to vote yet, please do it now. There's no need, reason to wait till the last minute. Please, please, please. The amount of stuff that the clerk staff has to do on Election Day, answering questions in the polls, we'll do the work. We'll get people registered. We recruited a lot of city employees to help us on Election Day and the day before. So thank you to all those departments. But voters and potential voters can help us out by doing their stuff early. Return your absentee ballot when you know who you're going to vote for. There's no need to wait for the last minute. We have so many different convenient ways between the mail, between two different offices, between drop boxes to get your ballots in with us. And once again, no need to wait till the last minute. Register, if you need to register a vote, you need to change your address, do it now. It'd just take a lot of stress off the clerk's office and various other city staff as well. So I thank the city commission and the mayor and the city manager and the city attorney and all the top management that's been supportive, getting through, getting those absentee ballots. So I think we're up to forty-eight thousand absentee ballots out now because we get hundreds a day, and we're probably over twenty-five hundred back end. So that's what we're up to, and thank you very much for all your support.
Thank you, city clerk. Appreciate it.
And I got some money.
Yes. Congratulations on that. City manager, any comment?
I continue to be appreciative of city staff for all the work that they do day in, day out, and particularly on days like this where we are dealing with lots of issues. And we're, I think you all are doing a great job of balancing the many issues and trying to figure our way through the storm that we're experiencing as a country and community. And I'm very hopeful of the work that's being done, that we continue to find our way through it. And it's a matter of, we're all in the same storm. I'm not sure we're all in the same boat. I'm a little concerned about some of the comments I heard this evening, and I think everybody has a right to express their opinions, but I think in these difficult times, knowing... But I think in these difficult times, knowing that where we've come from and through and with all the concerns about equity and inclusion, to just to hear some of the comments were very troubling.
Thank you, city manager. And I'll just end by saying thank you to those who called in. And especially, I want to again say thank you to Breonna Taylor and family and friends and loved ones who called in tonight. And I want to say thank you to all my colleagues. We've had a long day and we've gotten a lot accomplished. I want to say thank you to our city staff, our city manager, and a really sincere thank you to Chief Payne for his update this morning and the information that was shared at Public Safety. Commissioners, if you're not a part of Public Safety, I encourage you to review that material. It elaborated on and answered some of the questions that were posed this morning during Chief Payne's presentation. And then again, just want to wish everyone a really safe night getting home. If you have to get home, I know I'm here at City Hall. But then also, if you get a chance, let's try to catch the rest of the debate because we have an important election coming up. And with that, we will adjourn. Have a good night, everyone.